Mr. Crusher, you're doing that as a backup.
Well.
Oh, we're not recording. All suspenders today. Good. Apologize for the delay in starting. We had a little technical difficulty and I think that's all been corrected. So before our meeting begins, an invocation will be offered by Commissioner Waddington, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'd like to ask for a moment of silence in memory of Ben Matthews, who retired from the City of Sandusky's Water Department. God our Father, as we gather for this meeting this evening, give us the guidance and wisdom to make the proper decisions. Amen.
Amen.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Crusher, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Harris?
President.
Ms. Twine?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Minzer?
Here.
Mr. Poole?
Present.
Mr. Waddington?
Here.
Commissioners, we have as our first item of business today, the nomination and election of a commission leadership. And so I would first ask if there is anyone who wishes to make a nomination for the position of President of Commission.
Mr. Chairman? Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Poole.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate you, Mr. Murray, for President. You've done an excellent job.
Thank you. I appreciate the compliment, but I decline.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Waddington.
I nominate Commissioner Brady for presidency.
Are there any other nominations? Then the nominations are closed. Mrs. Crusher, would you call the commissioners on the nomination of Mr. Brady as the commission president?
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Present.
Yes or no?
Present.
That needs to be a yes or a no, Mr. Poole.
Yes or no?
No.
And Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady is our new commission president, and I congratulate you, and careful what you ask for. And I'll wrap this up so we can take care of this. Are there any -- I'm sorry, we need to turn to the nomination of the Vice President of Commission. Any nominations for that position?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Waddington.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Murray, Commissioner Murray.
We will accept that, Mr. Waddington. Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Then the nominations are closed. Mrs. Crusher, would you call the roll?
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That election is filled. Thank you. We'll switch seats then.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Waddington.
Before you switch seats, I'd like to thank you for the last six years. You've done a great job. I know it's hard to sit in that center seat. I've been around, this is my fourth term, I've seen a lot of bullets fly that direction, and you've sealed them pretty well.
Thank you.
I think the change is going to be good, though, for the next two years.
I do. I think maybe I'll just take a little break, and we'll see where we go next.
There you are. All right. Congratulations. All right.
There's a seatbelt that comes with it. And a chin strap, I hope. Now you've done it. As Commissioner Murray is fond of saying, "This is a fine kettle of fish we find ourselves in now." I want to thank my fellow commissioners for this opportunity, and I want to thank Commissioner Murray for the last six years of his service as a mayor. I'll remind each of you, just as I was reminded years ago, this mayor position gives me the same number of votes as each of you have. That's one. My obligation in this chamber is just to direct traffic, to allow each of you and every resident that shows up here to have a voice, but have that voice in an orderly fashion. To a certain degree, the mayor's position invariably does take on the personality of the person holding the office. Mine will be different than Commissioner Murray's. There will be some changes, some subtle and some not so subtle. Changing seats does not mean that we are changing direction. What will not change is the trajectory that this city has been on for the past six years. It's my hope that the two years from now, when we look back, these eight years will appear absolutely seamless. It's opening night for two new commissioners, Commissioner Minzer and Commissioner Harris. Welcome. Buckle up, you're in for an interesting ride. I'll remind you, just as I was reminded years ago by my mentors, you represent 25,000 residents of this city. Your voice is really their voice. We have very important legislation before us. Let's get started.
If I may, I'd like to recognize our newest Chief Financial Officer, Michelle Reader, who was with us this evening for the first time. Welcome to the City of Sandusky. We're delighted to have you associate with us and looking forward to great things to come.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. You just won't give it up, will you? That's part of my repertoire. That's what I was thinking. Like, let Dick do that.
I was just trying to help you out.
Thank you. Keep doing that. Our first order of business is swearing in our newest police officer, Patrick O'Connor. Officer O'Connor, I love that name. There's nothing more traditional than an Irish police officer, is there? I want to thank you for choosing this profession and recognize your family and friends that are here tonight. You're joining a very elite group of men and women in a department that earns the respect of our community on a daily basis. While most of us go about our daily lives and sleep comfortably in our beds, you and countless others in your profession stand guard. Tonight, we're thanking you for choosing this profession, and in 30 years, I hope a future commission is sitting right here and they can thank you for your service. Mr. Webster, Chief Orze, the floor is yours.
Mr. President, I am sorry. So I will be the first paragraph, and I ask you to raise your right hand. I, Patrick O'Connor, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States of America and the Constitution and laws of the State of Ohio, and the laws and ordinances of the City of Sandusky, Ohio, which I am appointed to the best of my ability to discharge the duties of this office. And the laws and ordinance of the City of Sandusky, Ohio, which I am appointed to the best of my ability to discharge the duties of this office. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Girlfriend's wanting to pin this badge on. Good choice, as usual. And she's a state trooper with the Ohio State Highway Patrol, so she won't get out of line.
I'd like to welcome Patrick aboard. He started officially with the city last Thursday. His service has already been with the state, with the Upper Sandusky Police Department. He's been there five years, so we have five years' worth of experience. He was in a supervisory rank there. He's attended the Police Executive Leadership College, which is one of our trainings for people that want to excel in leadership. So we're very impressed that for someone young in his age in his career that he's already achieved that. So we look for great things, and welcome aboard.
the city right at the moment. Commissioners, you have before you the minutes from our meeting of December 20th, 2019. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Waddington?
I move that we accept the minutes of the December 20th meeting and dispense with formal reading.
Second.
There been a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, the motion is approved. This brings us to our audience participation. Please step to the podium, tell us your name and address, and share with us your thoughts, keeping in mind that we and staff will attempt to answer your questions as the agenda item is brought up before us tonight.
Tim Schwanger, 362 Sheffield Way. It's going to take me a few meetings to get used to saying, "Thank you, Mr. Brady."
Me too.
Two items. The first item is number six, which is the change order number one for the Shoreline Drive Rehab Project, a change order amounting to $1.2 million. In reading through the lengthy documents, and this is just my opinion, it looks more like a $1.2 million is not necessarily a change order from the project, but actually additions to the project. The actual meaning of a change order in the past for the city was if a project was started and they ran into issues, then there would be change orders to the project. Again, this seems like it's additions to the original contract that the City Commission approved for the Shoreline Drive Project itself. Before you vote this evening, I would like you to think about this for a second. Just before I came to this meeting, I drove the entire length of the project. It's six tenths of a mile, six tenths of a mile. We're spending $10 million, and it doesn't matter where the money's coming from, it doesn't matter whether it's coming from the Chesapeake Lofts, CDBG, water and sewer rates. We're spending $10 million on six tenths of a mile of a street. To put that in perspective, Defiance, Ohio, last year began a project of replacing a complete bridge span across the Maumee River, took it down to the bare bones, rebuilt it, reopened it at the end of last year, 8.3 million. Something's not right with this project. I would encourage you to vote no on this evening, based on the fact that this $1.2 million extra was discussed almost three years ago. It was decided that we were not going to do that portion of the project. And the question begs, I guess the question I'll ask for this project is, it's mostly utility lines. From what I understand and attending other meetings, the high voltage wires aren't coming down, so we're still going to have wires visible. The question would be is how many telephone poles do we have now, or not telephone poles, but utility poles do we have now, and how many are going to be eliminated through this project? The telephone poles are the biggest visual obstruction, not the wires. The other issue would be $830,000 out of CDBG for this project over the last two years. Take a look at Shoreline Drive, you're going to see multimillion-dollar projects, multimillion-dollar development, multimillion-dollar properties. CDBG was originally intended for blighted and slum areas. And I understand we hired city architecture and they did a study, and they determined downtown was blighted, but it's time that we start spending that money in other areas of the community. Same way with Chesapeake Lofts TIF. Entire downtown, the streets, the sidewalks, the curbs, the gutters are eligible for TIF money. Let's start using it there and make the rest of downtown more pretty. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schwanger.
I, too, would like to comment on this one million change order. I think this is ridiculous. I hope this is the last that we're going to hear of anything going on with this. This is designed to build, so there's no overruns. I'm just wondering if you're camouflaging the overruns. There has to be great big overruns on that project. I don't understand. We were under the impression that this project, when it was bonded out, the whole thing was being bonded out. Now we find out that we still have to pay for the East End there. Then we find out, too, that who's helping us bail us out of this financial mess is a nonprofit, a half a million dollars coming from a nonprofit. We can't stand on our own two feet to pay for this? We have to rely on a nonprofit, a half a million dollars? I can understand a nonprofit giving 20,000, 30,000 to a project, but a half a million dollars? What kind of straits are we in? We're relying too much on nonprofits to do these big projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Anyone else on agenda items? Mr. Lamarcas?
Greetings, Commissioners. Tom Lamarcas, 20648 Street. I, too, am upset about the new price or new adder for the Shoreline Drive Project. You know, we expect a few things to come along, a little bump in the road, but one of the obvious ones to me was the new main waterline loop that Facer Park due to the age. Well, I mean, didn't they know that Facer Park was 100 years old? And so, but that's a small price to pay. It's only $28,000. But the whole thing is, it's kind of like smoking mirrors when this project was originally bid because Citizensworth sold a stripped-down model of a Ford Falcon for $7,968,000. Then, with the city commissioners' options to add the options of A, B, and/or C, which was originally priced at $1,361,268. Now, we're getting a little discount there, I guess, but then the base price changed from the $7,968,000 to $8,789,000, $789,877. So, well, of course, you want to bury the utilities, but at the cost of $1,207,000 for a change order request, the idea of a design-build project is to build it within the bid, and also to hopefully build it for under that bid and to save some dollars. And so we've obviously exceeded that base, and somebody's missed something there. I don't know who to blame. We have to look around. It doesn't make any difference because it's a lot of dollars being spent. The cost of this Shoreline Drive Project now exceeds $2,700 per foot, $2,700 per foot. And then if we throw in the Jackson Street Pier project into this, it's a $20 million project for about a mile of road with the Jackson Street Pier loop and all of that. And then, of course, Kocin wants a 56-day extension now to do this additional work, so they're not living within the original contract. And mind you, they had a lot of days off. There was months that there was no work being done on either the pier or Shoreline Drive. So those are my thoughts. Thank you so much for listening. Now we're at $9,997,585.28 for seven tenths of a mile of Shoreline Drive if you approve this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lamarcas. Anyone else on agenda items?
Happy New Year and welcome.
Thank you.
Commissioners, I'm sure you've all been advised of my presence. I'm turning over a new leaf, trying to, anyway. If you allow me to, I will. My first situation came about, and I think I called the city manager's office and I spoke to some people about it, but nothing was changed, I'm sure. I didn't get a couple water bills, one for a rental property and one for our home. Didn't get them, didn't pay them. When they come in, I pay them. So I get a letter. Now, the bills were due January 3rd. This letter was sent out to me December 19th. And it said...
Ma'am, I don't, I've let you get into this a little further than I probably should, but this section is for items that are on the agenda. I don't think your water bill's on the agenda.
I'll be back, but it will be.
Okay. And you'll have that opportunity.
Guarantee. Throwing the leaf away.
You'll have that opportunity at the end of the meeting on our audience participation.
Number A on the agenda, the liquor permit changes. Those are strictly, is what I'm questioning, those are strictly changes from one address to another for those entities? That's my question. A grant to the ODNR for the Jackson Street Pier. A grant, we're applying to a grant from the ODNR for the Jackson Street Pier. That's in number two on the agenda. I thought we had this all taken care of. I thought the funding was taken care of. Everything was in line to do this project, and now we're asking for a grant. And I think we have on the agenda to go through the ordinance and make the motion and all that tonight. So I don't buy a car unless I've talked to the bank and everything's in order. So now we're looking for a grant for that Jackson Street. Number three, approximately $4 million from Sewer and Water. I will bring in my water bill with this one, because if we need $4 million from that sewer and water plant, we can certainly afford a software program for the Water Department. We'll get back to that later. This pathway funding is also in that. Now, we're going to use Sewer and Water again for this pathway. The pathway was not funded. Did we have a motion and an amount for the pathway? But now we're going to take $4 million from Sewer and Water. And number five, the loan from the Ohio Department of Water for $5,485,372.07. We're going to take a loan out when we're using sewer and water funds for other projects. But we're going to take a loan out so that people can pay for this again. I have a real problem with the way things are going. So hopefully, we can get some new direction, some of the new people, and guide the older commissioners to a better path of spending our money more, not just him. I want him to rein you in. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And as I think you're aware, all staff are paying close attention to your questions, and we'll try to answer as many of those as we can when the legislation is presented.
Speaking of questions.
That's how this works.
Speaking of questions.
Yes.
What's your stand on answering questions up here when people have them in the audience participation?
We are staying the exact course that Mr. Murray put into place. Those questions will get answered, but they're not going to get, we're not going to have a debate here. We're not going to have...
No, 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 I don't mean that. But when will the answers be forthcoming?
We will answer your questions almost immediately through staff.
Through what?
Through staff. Staff will answer your questions. We'll get answers to your questions.
Okay. And does that mean that the email, little email project is working? Because I'm hearing it's not. I'm hearing people are not getting answers. So we might want to look into that.
Certainly take a look at that.
Thank you.
Thank you for your suggestions. Any other audience on agenda items? Commissioners, you have before you several communications from staff recommending various legislation. Can I have a motion to accept these communications?
So moved.
Second.
There been a motion and a second discussion? Without objection, the motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, the motion is approved. Commissioners, we have four items on our consent agenda. They're all liquor permit transfers, which is a little unusual. Are there any of these items, transfers, that you'd like moved to the regular agenda? Mr. Crusher, will you present those items on the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. Brady. The first item is a liquor permit transfer for the FOE A Erie 444 Sandusky Eagles Club from 1235 West Perkins Avenue to 608 Main Street. Item B is a transfer for the Paternal Order of Eagles from 533 West Perkins Avenue to 1235 West Perkins Avenue. Item C is a transfer for Sandusky Salvage Center LLC at 2434 West Monroe Street. And item D is a transfer for Marg Sand LLC, doing business as Margaritaville, at 212 Fremont Avenue.
Commissioners, you've heard these items on the consent agenda. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Twine?
I move to accept the consent agenda and declaring that all ordinances and/or resolutions as drafted and presented to the City Commission under the consent agenda shall take effect in accordance with the section reflected in the ordinances and/or resolutions, whether it be Section 13 or 14. Since all of these are liquor permits, I request that the commission clerk be authorized to notify the division. The city does not have a request for a hearing in these matters.
Second. There been a motion and a second. Mrs. Crusher, will you pull the commission on the motion?
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
That motion is passed, and the clerk is now authorized to notify the Liquor Control Division. The city does not request a hearing on any of these liquor transfers. Mr. Crusher, that brings us to our main agenda. Will you present item number one?
Yes, Mr. Brady. Item number one is an ordinance approving and ratifying the purchase of real property located at 2139 Perkins Boulevard, identified as parcel number 58-01526.000, for the purpose of blight elimination and demolition, and authorizing and directing the city manager and/or finance director to expend funds for the purchase of the real property, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Twine?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
There been a motion and a second discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Waddington?
Could someone tell me, how much property? Do we own about half that out there at MacArthur Park now? Pretty close to half of the properties?
I think that Mr. Lasko probably has that answer.
Through you, Mr. President, to Commissioner Waddington. We probably, between the City of Sandusky and the Erie County Land Utilization Corporation, we probably own about a third of the total acreage and parcels out there. And this is sort of just an extension of several pieces of legislation we brought before the commission in 2019, as we tried to acquire and eradicate the blight within the MacArthur Park and Churchill Park area. So this is just a very similar piece of legislation to what we brought forth last year, but happy to answer any additional questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, any additional questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Poole?
Just in general, we're acquiring all these properties. This particular property is an up-to-date, tax-paying piece of property. As we move forward with this, as we start, we're taking these properties that are actually have their taxes paid. How soon are we going to use them and start to see some return on this? What's your projections for that?
Through you, Mr. President, to Commissioner Poole. I would state a couple things. One, not to minimize the extent of what these properties are paying on an annual basis, but most of the properties we're acquiring are anywhere between $1,200 to $1,300 a year in terms of the real estate taxes they're paying. I also do think, over the short and midterm, we actually do see an uptick in property values that are adjacent to the properties we demolish in terms of the real estate taxes they are paying. But from a pure planning and development standpoint, just my opinion, without consulting our planning department or the city manager and the larger neighborhood in question, I think we probably need to be somewhere in the 75% range of properties acquired before we can start actually developing a master plan and vision for that neighborhood, because we've got to look at everything from altering the street grid to doing some type of comprehensive and dense development within that area. So I do think in the short term, there's going to be a slight reduction in, obviously, the property values that are being accumulated. But I do think, within a three- to five-year span, we are going to see property values increase, whether that's on Perkins Avenue or Carlan or wherever it may be. So I do think it will offset pretty quickly, and then ultimately, with the large-scale development... Um, so I do think it will offset pretty quickly, and then ultimately with a large-scale development, that's where we'd see the huge upside for the city and the region.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Ms. Murray.
I, I would add also that, you know, while this may take some time, and we don't know exactly where the process is going to go, um, we have been successful the last several years because we've been very deliberate in putting together a plan and then executing on that plan. Um, and this is no different. We don't know exactly when these are going to become available, um, but the word is out there certainly among the owner community that the city is an interested buyer with pretty strict limits that have been placed on what we'll pay. So there's, you know, they know if they want to sell, this is what they're going to get, and otherwise, they're not going to get that. So I applaud the continuation of that program, even though we don't really know when it's going to come to a conclusion.
Mr. Lasko, uh, two points, just so our residents are completely clear on this. We're not getting in the rental business by buying these properties. We're buying them to tear them down. And number one, and number two, I want to compliment you on ratcheting down the, the cost you're paying for them. I was impressed the last time we spent money to buy these, and you have brought it down to a new low mark. I think it's around $62.50 per unit, which is, which is excellent.
Uh, yes, Mr. President. Not only have all the properties, at the time we entered into contract, they were already vacant, uh, but if they weren't, uh, we have a stipulation in all of our purchase agreements that those properties be delivered to the city vacant. Uh, secondarily, this would be the second, uh, most inexpensive property from a per-unit standpoint that we've purchased within that area. We did get one up share of sale for about $2,000 per unit. But this one at $62.100, $62.50 is fairly inexpensive compared to some others we've bought and asked. But to your point, uh, we've got some pretty strict guidance, uh, on what, uh, we, the staff is willing to put in front of the commission and what the commission will consider from a price-per-unit standpoint.
Good. Thank you, Ms. Lasko. Additional questions, Commissioner? Ms. Cresser, will you pull the commission on the motion?
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington? Yes.
Now on the ordinance?
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance has passed. Item number two, Ms. Cresser.
Item number two is a resolution approving and ratifying the submission of an application for financial assistance through the Ohio Department of Natural Resources for capital improvement funds for the Jackson Street Pier and Shoreline Drive rehabilitation projects and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
There been a motion and a second discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Murray.
I think I can probably vote on this issue, but out of an abundance of caution, having not received an advance opinion from the Ethics Commission, I'm going to abstain on this one.
Appreciate that. Mr. Klein, uh, this is one of the several items you have on this agenda. I wonder if you can share with us, uh, what exactly we're doing here and why we're doing it?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Excuse me, um, to the, the question that was posed earlier, the $75,000 that we are getting from ODNR is not necessarily new money. We're just formally accepting money that was granted to us back in 2018. At the time, it took until 2019 for them to develop the agreement, so we're here in 2020 to accept that money. Originally, on the original budgets, we had $70,000 allocated to the Jackson Street Pier and $5,000 allocated to Shoreline Drive. Being that this is money that's, that's set up for, through ODNR, for park recreation and conservation, they felt that this was, uh, these two projects together with the pathway and the recreational aspects of both of them, it was a good use for their state capital budget, and that's a credit to, uh, the city manager for going after that money a couple of years ago and having that foresight. Um, so when we got down to it, they told us that they get to keep $1,500 of it for administrative fees. So here we are with now having $70,000 that we'd like to allocate towards the Jackson Street Pier, $3,500 towards Shoreline Drive, and this is just a formal acceptance of that money and applying it into the budget for this project, in, both projects in particular.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Commissioners, additional questions? Ms. Cresser, will you pull the commission on the motion?
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Abstain.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
That resolution has passed. Ms. Cresser, will you present item number three?
Item number three is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Spear Brothers Incorporated for the West Side Utility and Connectivity Improvements Project and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, you've heard this ordinance? How do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second. There been a motion and a second discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Poole.
Just in general about the expenditure of sewer and water funds, any, for my purposes, I think any money that's from the sewer and water fund that is spent directly on improving our sewers and, and, and water lines is money well spent. Uh, it's something that, uh, you, we need. Our sewers and water lines are quite old, just like the city, and so I support this project 100% for the use of that money.
Additional questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Waddington.
I'm glad to see we're socking some money on the West End again, so, and folks will be happy about that.
Ms. Cresser, will you pull the commission?
I'm sorry, I didn't realize you were completed. Um, may I, uh, have the floor for just a second?
Mr. Murray.
Uh, I'm going to abstain on this because of private practice matters and avoiding an appearance of impropriety. Thank you.
Duly noted.
Mr. President.
Commissioner Mike?
I, uh, I did notice that about $400,000 is coming out of, uh, the capital in issue eight funds, and, uh, it, not strictly out of water and sewer funds for the pathway. I just want...
Commissioners, any other discussion? Ms. Cresser, will you pull the commission on the motion?
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Abstain.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Abstain.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
That ordinance has passed. Ms. Cresser, will you present item number four?
Item four is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement for professional services with K.E. McCartney and Associates Incorporated of Mansfield, Ohio for contract administration and inspection services for the West Side Utility and Connectivity Improvements Project and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
There been a motion and a second discussion? Mr. Klein, uh, I wonder if you would share with us how important, uh, spending almost a half a million dollars is on the inspection portion of, of this project?
Yes, sir. Through you, Mr. President, uh, as I think everybody's aware, we have a lot of construction projects going on right now, and we have two inspectors. One is dedicated full-time at this time to Shoreline Drive, and the other one is running around the city, uh, inspecting the other projects. We also have, uh, other inspectors on those, but it's very important to us to ensure that, especially a project of this magnitude and, uh, that's along a state route like this, that the sewer lines, the water lines, everything's being installed properly. So we want to make sure we have full-time inspection out here onsite to be on top of the contractor, to be standing there watching, confirming that the stone is being placed and that's being backfilled and compacted, and everything's being done according to the specs. So it's extremely important to us that, that this happens, and the, the cost of $484,000 to go towards this seems like a large number, but the fact that the contractor plans to start, um, around April in the Linden Edgewater neighborhood and then continue through that until September timeframe, and then jump onto Route 6 Venice Road there for another seven or eight months. We have about 14, 15 months' worth of work for them, for their office to review submittals, make sure we're getting the right materials and everything else. So this is a lot of work for them to be on at full-time, and that's including 12-hour days sometimes. So, um, it, it, this is something that we think is extremely important, not only for the sewer and water piece, but we also want a, a bike path out there that's going to withstand the test of time.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. In addition to, to the money that you're, that we're spending, which is a lot of money, both of these companies, both the contractor and the inspection company, they both are required to have 100% performance bonds also. Is that not correct? And, and that means that i-if, if either of them fail, we have an insurance company behind them to, to guarantee their performance?
Yes.
Good, thank you. Commissioners, any additional questions? Ms. Cresser, will you pull the commission on the motion?
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington? Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?[1442.42]
Nothing makes that fact more clear than Commissioner Waddingson's concept about some of our water lines were put in the ground while Lincoln was still walking on the earth. So that, that certainly, that certainly attests to the fact of longevity of stuff that you put in.
Still looking for that pipe, though.
I do, one more thing, thank you, Mr. President. I do want to assure the commission that, yes, there is bike path, you know, the issue aid and the, and the bike money from capital in this project. That is not allowed to be included in that OWDA loan, so this is strictly for the sewer and water piece.
So that is outside of that. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. Additional questions, Commissioner? Commissioner, you polled the commission on the motion.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddingson?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddingson?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddingson?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddingson?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddingson?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddingson?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddingson?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddingson?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddingson?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddingson?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddingson?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddingson?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddingson?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddingson?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddingson?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddingson?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddingson?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddingson?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddingson?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddingson?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddingson?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddingson?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddingson?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddingson?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddingson?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddingson?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddingson?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddingson?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddingson?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddingson?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddingson?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddingson?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddingson?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddingson?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddingson?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddingson?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddingson?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddingson?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddingson?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddingson?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddingson?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddingson?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddingson?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?[904.83]
Single dollars going towards the Jackson Street.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. President?
If I'm incorrect, please stop me, Mr. Klein, but I this did alarm me as well as the a large amount of percentage of the whole project. But after reading into it, because I was not here last year, but earlier year before in eighteen, it is an owner requested change order. It's the same as your spouse wanting updated fixtures when you go into build a whole new home. And it's not a contingency that the contractor requested or wanted in part of the contingency. The one thing I noticed that kind of caught me off guard, I was wondering why we were burying, well, I realized why we were burying utilities because the commission, the staff, and people from all over the city, not just downtown, wanted the utilities buried. I was curious as to why we were spending the money for cable, AT&amp;T, why we were paying for it. And I think I realized that most likely if we didn't, we made an ordinance that everything has to be underground. They would most likely say, well, they're not getting cable down on the high rise or shoreline. They probably refuse to do it. And two, I looked in the comprehensive budget from last year, and I realized that we get about three hundred fifty to four hundred thousand dollars in franchise fees from those two entities. So I think it kind of justifies us paying for putting those underground for them.
Mr. President, I kind of get to that in a couple slides. If you want me to answer it now, I certainly can.
Oh, okay.
Why don't you address that now, Mr. Klein?
So as far as the utility burials, it's, I know in Washington Park, nothing's supposed to be above ground. Downtown, nothing's supposed to be above ground. When we were originally looking at burying all of the utilities, and I even looked at estimates from ten, fifteen years ago, that said it, the upper, the high transmission utilities were not allowed to be buried, or it was going to be astronomical cost. The only way we could get those to stay above ground and possibly even afford it is if we relocated them all the way to Adams. Because from that point north, you couldn't have anything above ground based on the city's requirements. Now, when we take something that's already strong and already above ground, and you tell the utility company that it's going to be buried, it's our responsibility to pay for that change. So we don't have much of a choice in this matter but to pay for not only the conduit but for their work to pull the wire and pull it through the handholds and go through that process and do it. So we're, by us wanting to bury the utilities and directing them, the contractor, to bury the utilities, it's our responsibility to pay to take them underground, so.
Mr. President? One more question. As back, I thought it was all the one here with this part of the block. But I noticed on this east end traffic calming, that's an eight-week delay, somewhere in there, that the coastines that would have, is there, was that set the schedule back much? Like, is this going to go into summer, July, for the businesses down there, is it?
No, this, this project right now with the fifty-six day extension, it goes through May second.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Additional questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Poole?
Yeah, I'd just like to save a couple things about the, the cost of this. The additional expense we're doing to bury these, these wires, when we started this project, we talked to, talked in terms of the benefits of removing the wires. And for me, once we accepted that at the very beginning, that we're going to remove the wires, you couldn't only do it halfway. If you stand down on the Shoreline Drive at Jackson Street and look east on Shoreline Drive, your eyes don't stop at Wayne Street. So it's a matter of, of once we committed as a community and accepted the concept that the, that part of the progress for our community and what was going to upgrade and make us, make us great, and I've said many times before, our biggest shortcoming is if we don't make this wow. It needs to be wow. And so not adding, not taking those wires down at that end was, would just not have been at all in our interest. Once we put eight million dollars into this, and it's not going, I'm going to be dead before it's paid for, I think the folks behind us are going to be quite, quite, much happier because you get, we'll get used of having the wires down the entire length. We'll get all the benefit from it and future generations. The property values along that area on the waterfront, your view matters. And so this investment, I think, is worthwhile. I'm also comfortable with the change you've made on the curve, that the radius was, that's, it solves the problem reasonably, and we still get the views. And more importantly, you worked with the citizens on up and down the street within that. And for me, that's, that's a big, a big plus, that you can say that the folks that are going to be affected by it directly are on board with it. And I think we, as the citizens, although a million dollars is a lot of money, we get something out of this and my taxes didn't go up anymore for it, so. That's my thoughts, and good job.
Thank you, Commissioner Poole. Commissioner Klein, go on with your presentation.
All right. So mile marker zero, this was one of the biggest additions to the project because of the Whitman-Weber funding. And this is the first rendering that we got. We got it a couple weeks ago, and I think it just really draws a lot of attention to this location. This is just north of Shade Mylander Plaza, where there's the steps that go down right now. You can see there's a bench there. And if you look in the bottom right-hand corner of the picture, there's an oval with some stamped concrete around it. That oval is to be a zero. So if you think about it, this is the starting point, whether you're going east, whether you're going west, whether you're starting in Huron or anywhere else, this is mile marker zero. This is where the Sandusky Bay pathway starts, right in the middle of downtown Sandusky. And this was something that was presented to Whitman-Weber last year, and they absolutely fell in love with it. The bollards that are there with the chains, we've gotten permission to, to take those chains down to energize that area even more. We, you can see that the lights, those four lights in the upper right-hand picture are the same lights that are in Shade Mylander Plaza, so we're really extending that plaza down to the water with mile marker zero. For the remainder of the lights going east and west are the Shoreline Drive lights. You can also see that bench there. We have Sandusky Bay pathway, not only on the land side of it, we're also putting it on the water side. So if somebody's taking a boat by, they can say, oh, there's a path up there. I need to get into the transient marina or wherever, and we can jump on our bikes. So we're hoping that this is, is a place where people will stop, turn around and look at downtown, look at the city and say, hey, there's a bike rack here, let me go walk, let me go explore, and let me grab a bite to eat or visit the shops downtown. So this is something that's real exciting. The bench was not a real inexpensive feature, so that's why it's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to do all of the changes in this whole area. That includes concepts that we evaluated, design, and final construction for this. Next, the utility burial from Wayne. One of the things that just always felt unsettling every time I, I talk to people to Commissioner Poole's point was that the project, unless we could bury the utilities all the way to the east end, the project really felt incomplete. It didn't feel like we were doing everything we should be doing. And one of the lines that I got off of the, off of the planning commission, it says, "To study and develop traffic calming and safety alternatives for the east end of Shoreline Drive, otherwise not taking any options off the table, also concurrent with the bury of utilities along Shoreline." And that was what I heard time and time again from people was, how do you get this buried to the east end? And when I was talking to the city manager early last year, and he was saying, we've got to figure out a way to do it, I knew it was going to be about a million dollars, and I'm freaking out. How am I going to bury the utilities and find a million dollars out of the general fund or out of some budget, or where's it coming from? And we went through the process, we're very diligent, we talked them down, we talked about numbers. In the base bid, we had from Wayne to the transient marina, but as we moved forward with the project, we knew that it was going to improve views and really create that full project. So the final cost to bury from Wayne to Franklin is nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. But you can see what's happening, in this picture, you can't really tell, but what's happening is, is they're running lines underground along the north side, they also have to get to the buildings on the south side. So it's not just running one set of conduit. They have to cross the road, they have to then get to all the buildings on the south side. And in addition, what the IT director really wanted was, he wanted to make sure that we put an empty conduit, it's for future city fiber, in case we run fiber along Shoreline Drive as well. So we do have those conduits in there, and gives us the flexibility to, to go that route. So next, through Landmark Commission, Mr. Hare was looking at putting a couple garages, drive aprons on the backside of his facility. So we got a cost to change it out now, as opposed to finishing the project in the plans as we designed it. You know, what's the cost to change it now so we don't have to go back and do it? And he's agreed, just like the water lines, to come and reimburse us within thirty days of that being done as well. And the last additional item is the private utility burial. This is just one of the examples, and it's just, we, our project limits went to the right-of-way line. We obviously have to get them into the building, too, so we can't just run it to the right-of-way and then tell the property owners, good luck. So we are, we had to pay a little bit extra, and I'll tell you what, a lot of these numbers that you're seeing here, I need to give Osborne credit, there are inspection firm out there and other city staff credit because these numbers could have been five, six hundred thousand dollars more, but we pushed real hard and pushed back very hard, and we're down to where we are. This one, for example, was around sixty-some thousand, and we got it down to twenty. So that's just one example about how hard the team has been working on this project. And now I want to bring up a few items that, just to update you guys on things. So we talked about Whitman-Weber, we talked about the things that, that they're doing and the money that they put forth. We felt it was very important to give them the recognition along the path. So what you'll see from Franklin to the west end of the site is you'll see banners like this hanging off of the poles. Those banners, I've reserved a little bit of money of that five hundred thousand because we don't have final numbers for that, so I've reserved a little bit of money to make sure that we did have that available. But I added all, I added the full five hundred to this change order to make sure that we could pay for those as well. And they were very excited about this, so. The next, this is just a quick image of the dumpsters. So we're, we finalized locations for the dumpster enclosures. This is something that they're going to look like. Each property owner's going to be allowed to put their dumpsters inside our enclosure that we're maintaining. And we still have with planning, we're working out the details of exactly how that's going to work out. As you're well aware, this is what the dewatering looked like for several months this summer. So going through that whole process, we worked diligently with EPA. They even came out and did inspections and said that the project was running smoothly, and they thought that the, the dewatering was the way it should be done, and they didn't have any issues with how we were doing things, except they didn't like the dirt that was being tracked in the street from the vehicles. So we asked them to bring a vac truck out, they were using a sweep, or yeah, just a sweeper. We asked them to bring a vac truck out and do that on a regular basis to actually suck it in the rows better, and they agreed to do that. You'll see this gentleman is entering the outfall at the base of the pier. He's in the second picture, that's where he came up, just on the south end of the slip where the Good Time docks. And he was checking those pipes, making sure that they were flowing well, and he was also putting a plug in there so we didn't have any water back flowing as they were putting in this enormous structure. And we did a lot of sewer improvements as we were going through the project, fixed a lot of items, consolidated some sewers at Wayne Street. We have more catch basins. After the fact, we're going to go back and put backflow preventers within the sewers, with our staff. It was a little cheaper for us to do it and a lot costlier for them, and the timing wasn't going to work out, so we're going to go back and do that. You'll see in this picture something that everybody's going to be very excited to get rid of. And those are the railroad tracks, those will no longer be under the roadway. That was pretty, pretty much what it looked like almost from Chesapeake to the east. And a couple more slides here. So we looked at the street lighting, like I said, we have streetlights on the north side of the road. South side of the road, we eliminated those streetlights. From Hancock East, we eliminated them entirely. On the south side of the road, the reason we eliminated them, one, was cost, and two, was it allows those property owners, if they want that outdoor dining, allows them to create that ambiance on their patio instead of us making it so bright and allows them. We also have enough for safety purposes, we went through that whole process to make sure it was bright enough. So that should be good. We, we selected benches, we're going to have a compass rose on the southeast corner of Jackson and on the southwest corner of Wayne to kind of set that block off as well. That was in the original design. The landscaping, we have all those trees, that's been going through our forestry division and greenhouse and going through all them, getting confirmed. What we made sure that we did with the trees was we only put them in the amenity area where there was a building on the north side of the road. We didn't want to block those views, so we wanted to make sure that we were putting them in reasonable locations. Wayne Street's going to get improved, new curb, new gutters and some of the sidewalks, that'll be resurfaced as well. And that last point there, we've already been approached by two of the businesses on Water Street that want to know when they can put outdoor dining on Shoreline Drive. They want to be ready in May or June when this thing opens, and they want to be able to have that outdoor dining. The top image kind of shows what it is. Unfortunately, we couldn't get the sidewalk right up against the back of curb, so the outdoor dining space will be on the backside of the curb with the five-foot walk between a possible deck and the dining area. Planning Department checked with the department with the state for liquor, and they said it was fine if, you know, their employees walked back and forth to serve and do those types of things. So we're going to make sure we sign that real well. We don't need somebody on a bicycle trying to go through there as fast as they can and take out a waiter. But the last but not least, this is what, this is what we're here for today. That middle column is the change order or the additional work for the project. We've got the five hundred for Whitman-Weber, we've got the Chesapeake TIF money. We had a set budget for this project, and we were able to cut some things out as we were going through this. So we were able to add some of that two hundred, we were able to add two hundred forty-five thousand back into it from that set budget. This is not additional above and beyond from that Chesapeake TIF. This was still within our original budget for what we had for the pier and Shoreline Drive. Those other items, this capital fund for Battery Park, that was for the Jackson Street bumpouts. And other than that, one last thing that I'd like to say to this is that when we got the original conceptual estimate way before we did the design-build project, before we even hired Osborne to go through that process back at the end of two thousand and eighteen, the estimate that we had at that time was five point five million. That did not include sewer and water. It was at that time that we said, look, we need to look at the utilities. If we're doing the entire streetscape and we're doing all the road, we need to look at the utilities. This project, as everybody's aware, everything that's been done out there to date, or almost everything, has been sewer and waterwork. You're talking from the north curb line all the way to the back of the building, sewer and water, and totaling three point four million dollars. So that takes us up to eight point nine. We also didn't have utility burial, except right in front of the Chesapeake in that original five point five. So we're also adding utility burial from the, from Decatur or from the transient marina all the way to the east end. And adding those to the original five point five, that puts us at ten point seven, and we're, we're just under ten million right now. So it is a big project, it is a big number. But with the utilities and with getting all-new infrastructure and doing everything and making it a comprehensive and burying those last two blocks of utilities, it, it's going to have much more of a feel of just a full project and like it's a complete project. And we did everything we could to energize this, these five or six blocks. So with that, I think that's as quick as I can be. Sorry, Matt. But if you guys have any more questions.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Klein? Thank you, Mr. Klein, for that thorough explanation, and I apologize for addressing you as a commissioner. If that were the case, you'd take a significant cut in pay, I can tell you that. Commissioners, any additional discussion on this piece of legislation?
Chairman, I will be abstaining from voting on this as I have throughout the design process on first round of Shoreline Drive.
Lee noted, thank you, Mr. Murray. Mr. Crestor, will you poll the commission on the motion?
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Abstain.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Abstain.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
That ordinance is passed. Mr. Crestor, will you present item number seven?
Yes, item number seven is a resolution being adopted pursuant to section fifteen zero six dot one-one of the Ohio Revised Code, finding and determining that based upon the representations and application filed by the City of Sandusky, the use and development of the territory so described, a submerged lands lease may be entered into by the State's Director of Natural Resources and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, you have before you this resolution, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Twine?
I move for the adoption of this resolution under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Second. There have been a motion and a second discussion, commissioners. Mr. Klein, I'm not going to let you off the hook. You have one more, one more thing, I think, here to tell us about, and that would be a submerged land lease. Very complex document, I'm sure.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, this is a submerged land lease for Shoreline Drive, which would be the right-of-way, the north right-of-way, and then there's some really strange line from the original land. I'd like to say it goes right down the center line of the road, but it doesn't, so we had to get it surveyed. We started the conversations with ODNR back in two thousand and eighteen. They said they weren't going to hold up the project, they just wanted to make sure we got the lines right. So we're just going through it, and it's similar to what we did at Curran Street and any of these other public rights-of-way. It's a one dollar per year that goes, that gets paid from the general fund, so this is just cleaning up something. Whenever we do a project in the right-of-way, we have to clean this up, so.
Commissioners, any additional questions or discussion? Mr. Klein, would, would we pay them a dollar a year or would we give them fifty dollars right now?
Through you, Mr. President. I'll have to defer to the finance director.
Yes.
Dollar a year.
Money now is worth less than money later, I take it. Thank you. Mr. Crestor, will you poll the commission on the motion?
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Abstain.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the resolution.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Abstain.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That resolution passes. Mr. Crestor, will you present item number eight?
Yes, item number eight is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to expend funds for the subscription licensing for Microsoft Office 365 for government from Insight Public Sector of Hanover Park, Illinois, for the city's emailing system and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Twine?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Second. There have been a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Hamilton, can you share with us what we're doing here? I think we're just buying a piece of software, aren't we?
New commission president, and this is basically just our yearly subscription licensing for our email service, collaboration messaging, OneDrive, storage, things like that. We pay every year, we've got two hundred and seventy-six licenses at this point, and it fluctuates every year. Microsoft is the only provider of that service, and we go through our resellers, so the price is pretty much set.
Great, thanks. Commission, there's any further discussion on this piece of legislation? Mr. Crestor, will you poll the commission on the motion?
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
That ordinance passes. Crestor, will you present item number nine?
Yes, item number nine is an ordinance approving and ratifying the submission of an application to the National Resource Network and authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the National Resource Network for assistance related to the development of a multi-year financial plan and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, you heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Twine?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Second. There have been a motion and a second. Mr. Whipser, I think you are probably most qualified to explain this piece of legislation.
Through the commission president? That's a little scary, but I'll do my best. The National Resource Network is a national nonprofit that has a focus area that includes working to build capacity and financial sustainability in urban areas and legacy cities. And they had forged a partnership funded by some national foundations to create a pilot program that's called the Ohio Resource Network, and ultimately are partnering with Greater Ohio, which is a nonprofit that focuses on Ohio's urban areas based in Columbus. Greater Ohio helped them to conduct a competition among cities to apply for funds to be part of those pilot, one of those three piloted cities in the state, one of which had to be from Appalachia and had to have been impacted by coal closures, to apply for grants that would help to do two things. One is to do a complete financial analysis and a long-term financial plan for the city so that we can look at how to make sure we're operationally sound, how to make sure recession-proof, to give us ideas as to best practices for things like staffing levels and long-term, you know, public project financing amongst other things. And so that's a lot of capacity that will be brought in. And then the second is, and for those of you who have participated in our process in which we get our bond rating, ultimately, we've done a really good job at being financially responsible, but we never get the highest rating, and the reason for that, they say, is based on the strength of the regional economy. And so the second part of the work is to be able to have someone come in and take a look at the economic conditions of Sandusky as well as the surrounding region, to determine what the city can do as a partner to nonprofit and, and business institutions and other partners to make sure that we're transitioning the economy from one that was predominantly based on manufacturing to one that still includes manufacturing but is looking at other opportunities to grow. And so that's a two-part process, both of which are seventy-five percent funded by the grant. They do require a twenty-five percent local match, which are in the budget for my office. We set aside funds for planning each year that we can use for that. We do want to offset some of those funds by, with some of the partners, particularly on the regional side, to help with that. But because of timing of when the national grant has to be spent down by, which is in the first half of this year, we wanted to proceed with legislation now so that process can begin, and we know that we can get both phases of the project done on time. With that, I'm happy to answer any further questions that the commission has.
Commissioners, further questions for Mr. Whipser?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Murray?
If I, if I may, I don't want us to move past this too quickly without recognizing the importance of this particular piece of legislation that we're taking up in this study. We have grown by leaps and bounds over the last couple of years, but, and, and we've done it with a lot of advice and input from others. We certainly have the state that comes in and conducts an audit every year, and so our books are closely scrubbed and examined. But this is something different, this is something very different. This is normative, if you will. It's a way to take a look at how we're investing what we have today and what we'll have tomorrow in a way that compares to what other cities with best practices are doing. So I think there are a lot of opportunities that will come out of this that we don't yet recognize because the study hasn't been completed. But the other piece is, is even more important. The one thing we truly lack in this area is a roll-up organization that allows us to take a look at the, the region as a whole. Communities our size, Erie County, northern Ohio, or central Ohio, say, that have been particularly successful have been ones that have done a couple of different things. They've either consolidated governments, and that's not something that really seems to be in the cards for us, or they've developed entities that take, that provide for us, or they've developed entities that take, that provide a platform, an effective platform. We have something like that. We have a council of governments for Erie County, but it's not an effective platform for lots of different reasons. Those entities that have effective platforms for the business community, and the private sector, obviously, the governments and the nonprofits to come together and think about what the problems are going forward and how it is that we can develop solutions to that. We don't have that today, and I think that the ability to have an outside firm come in and allow us to have that discussion, frankly, when we look back twenty years from now, we'll look back to, I hope, the work that is done as a result of this engagement and say, wow, that really made a difference, and it made a difference in a way that I didn't see coming, that we didn't see coming. So I really support this legislation.
Thank you. Commissioners, additional discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Poole?
Yes, this is something that we absolutely need to do. I've read, you need to read the details of what they've already assessed, but there's no question that going forward, if we're going to be successful, we're going to have to have a thorough plan for what we're going to spend our money on.
Thank you. I, I can tell you that when these people came to town, they brought about nine different individuals, and they interviewed a lot of our staff. Mr. Murray and I sat through more than an hour-long interview with them, and they fired forty, fifty questions at us about what we're doing in the city, what we intend to do, our direction. And I realized at that moment that this was a competitive opportunity, that we weren't going to just be given this opportunity. We had to earn this opportunity, and we earned the opportunity by what we've done in the last six years. That committee of nine, ten people from this agency figured that out. And I actually, I walked out of that meeting and, and shared with Mr. Murray that I think, I think they like this. I think they like this opportunity, and I think they see this as an opportunity for, for us to benefit and for the entire community to benefit, not just the city of Sandusky. And I think that kind of rolls back to the concept of cooperation and collaboration. And, and I think, I think we are really able to leverage a very small amount of dollars for some what could be really very high-level economic development in the future. So I encourage your consideration of this. Any additional questions or discussion? Mr. Crestor, will you pull the commission on the motion?
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
And, and now, and now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. That concludes our regular agenda items, and we will now turn to our city manager for his city manager report.
And through the Commission President to the rest of the commission, I think Dave realizes there's a, a national championship football game tonight. And that we had a very thorough and excellent presentation on Shoreline Drive that has maybe pushed us, so. I will do my best to be brief, but I did want to just take a time to, one, congratulate Commissioner Brady on ascending to Commission President, but then also to just thank Commissioner, Commissioner Murray for what was an incredible six years. I remember reading, as you ran for and took office back in two thousand thirteen, one of the statements that you made was that Sandusky was a city that used to do big things, and that we'd been battered pretty hard by a lot of forces outside of our control, and maybe at some point while we were out at sea, maybe lost that ability or our belief in ourselves. I don't think anybody will look back at the six years while you were president of this commission and say that the city is no longer doing big things, and that's a testament to the entire commission, but somebody has to sit at the head of that table. And it has been really special for not only myself, but for all of the staff and the community to see that leadership in action. And I really do think the ship has turned, and, and really looking forward to see what we'll accomplish over the next few years. But thank you so much for your years of service and your continued service to the city. With that, I will start with the donations. First, a donation of thirty-five dollars received from Kathleen Fetz for the K-9 Fund. I'd ask for a motion to accept that donation.
Second.
A motion and a second discussion. Not objection, that motion will be approved in hearing, no objection, that motion is approved with our thanks.
Second, a donation of a hundred and twenty-two dollars from the friends of the Sandusky Greenhouse for the charity Fireman's Shoe Fund. I'd ask for a motion to accept that donation.
So moved.
Second.
There have been a motion and a second discussion. Not objection, that motion will be approved in hearing, no objection, that motion is approved with our thanks.
And finally, a donation of five thousand received from Cedar Fair for the Opportunity Zone Master Plan. A motion to accept that donation.
So moved.
Been a motion?
Second.
And a second, I think, discussion. Not objection, that motion will be approved in hearing, no objection, that motion is approved.
Thank you, Commissioner Brady. Moving on to new and old business administration. First, I have some city manager appointments that require the assent of the city commission, so I will read a list of various appointments, and then I'd ask for a motion potentially to affirm those appointments. And if you need to pull any individuals out, you can do that, but we'll try to get through them so long as there's consensus. First, the Bayfront Corridor Committee, appointments for Mark Harrington, Joe Hagerger, Carl Maguki, and Steve Pajali through twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-two. For the Economic Development Incentive Committee, reappointing Ale Nichols also through twenty twenty-two. The Erie Metropolitan Housing Authority Board, resident participant, Alicia Sivett, through twelve twenty, twenty-four. The Erie County Board of Health, Charles Murray, through twelve thirty-one, twenty-four. The Housing of Beals Board to reappoint Sharon Johnson through twenty twenty-two, and to add Allison Will as an alternate through twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty. For the Income Tax Board of Review, to appoint Carrie May through twenty twenty-one. The Plumber Examining Board, Mark Dunn, John Zellner, and Dave Swander through twenty twenty-two. And the Public Arts and Culture Commission to reappoint Brian Stanley also through twenty twenty-two. That, that's the hotel.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
All those and a second?
Second.
My, I think I heard my brother's name in there.
We pulled Charlie out, maybe?
Yeah, because if we could modify that by removing my brother's name, I'd appreciate that.
All but Charlie, please. Can I get a motion to appoint all but Charles Murray?
Someone willing to amend that motion? Mr. Waddington, amends that move? There's a second to amending that move?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Mr. Crestor, I think we should do a roll call vote on that.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole? Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That, that motion for that group is passed. Now, do we want to do Charlie Murray separately? Could I have a motion to approve Charles Murray separately for the Health Department?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Crestor, will you pull the commission on that motion?
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
I'm staying.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
So we're good? We got them? Okay, moving on.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Moving on to police, Lieutenant Mike Campbell officially retired January second. We want to thank him for his twenty-nine years of dedicated service to the community. Steve Ritterbach was promoted to the rank of lieutenant on January ninth. To congratulate him. Evan E. Step was promoted to the rank of sergeant also on January ninth, and as we noted earlier, Patrick O'Connor was sworn in with an effective start date of January tenth. Congratulations to all involved. Also, the original appointment testing through the National Testing Network begins January fifteenth and runs through March first for full-time candidates. Information can be found on the city website or through the National Testing Network, or you can contact Victoria Schaefer from our Human Resources Department at four one nine six two seven five eight eight five. Moving on to finance, a general reminder for property owners of vacant dwellings. If your dwelling is expected to remain vacant and unoccupied during winter months, we highly recommend that you contact our office to turn off the water. This will help prevent your water lines from freezing and breaking, which would lead to cost of repairs for the property owner. The customer accounting office number is four one nine six two seven five eight nine three. For Public Works, we'd like to congratulate Nick Jacobs for his promotion utility to operator at Big Island, and also to let the commission know and the community that OPWC has awarded one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for Camp Street Improvements Project, including resurfacing and reconstruction of camp between West Monroe and West Washington. Unfortunately, the application for the citywide resurfacing program was not awarded, which would have allowed the city to expand a planned local resurfacing project that included seventy-five asphalt street sections, which we presented at the next commission meeting. Construction on camp is anticipated to begin in August. Also, a friendly reminder that in order to provide a safe, walkable community for residents, important to maintain clear sidewalks during winter months, and a reminder that property owners are responsible for clearing their sidewalks and any adjacent sidewalk ramps of snow and ice. For community development, on January fifth, twenty twenty, the city published the annual notice in the register outlining solid waste disposal requirements. Any properties found to have trash, debris, garbage, and other refuse in the public right-of-way or boulevard outside of the permitted times shall be declared a nuisance, and the city may cause said refuse to immediately be removed without notice. If the city removes the nuisance, the cost of doing so, along with a hundred-dollar administrative fee, so will be assessed to the property owner. As a reminder, trash, debris, garbage, and other refuse recyclables may be placed upon a curb for curbside collection or earlier than six P.M. on the evening prior to the scheduled collection of solid waste between April first and September thirtieth, and four P.M. between October first and March thirty-first. And any solid waste or containers which remain after collection shall be removed from said curb no later than eight P.M. on the date of collection. Also, the Economic Development Incentive Review Committee, its next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, January fourteenth, at one thirty P.M. in these chambers. And the Cedar Fair BGSU School of Resort and Attraction Management, or RAM, as it's been referred to, is pursuant to the grant agreement entered into at the Erie County Port Authority. The city released its second of three disbursements to the project. To date, the city has dispersed eight hundred and eighty thousand of the million-dollar grant with the final one hundred and twenty thousand due in January of twenty twenty-one. For the Planning Department, as part of the twenty twenty Public Art Work Plan, the Public Arts and Culture Commission wishes to issue the following two small grant programs. As of now, each would receive a maximum of fifteen thousand per year. The first program would allow businesses, either in partnership with an artist or in partnership with Sandusky Public Arts and Culture Commission, to submit a grant for the design and installation of a piece of artwork to be placed or viewed by the public. The second program would offer an opportunity for an artist to submit projects through a grant application for the design and installation of a piece of artwork to be placed or viewed by the public. And also, the Public Arts and Culture Commission intends to release a request for qualifications to establish a new pre-qualified list of emerging and established artists and artist teams working in a variety of visual media and artistic approaches for its twenty twenty through twenty twenty-two pre-qualified artist list. This list will allow the Public Arts and Culture Commission to do direct selection of artists and small projects with quick timelines. The request for qualifications is intended to be released the week of January twenty-seventh, and qualifications will be accepted any time after the release. We do have Robin Hudnall, who's on the Arts and Culture Commission, in the audience tonight as well. And then just some updates, the regular planning commission meeting is January twenty-second at four thirty P.M. in the chambers. Board of Zoning Appeals is January sixteenth. I don't have a time on Board of Zoning Appeals.
So through you, Mr. President. Actually, we're going to cancel that. The application has been withdrawn.
Withdrawn. Landmarks Commission at four P.M. on January fifteenth in the commission chambers, and Arts and Culture, Culture, January twenty-first at five fifteen P.M. in the commission chambers. And that concludes my remarks for this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for the city manager? No questions. Mr. Whipser, I'm not going to let this slide by. I, I feel compelled to acknowledge your presentation last Friday at the Cleveland City Club. That, that was truly a homecoming for you, and it was evident to, to all of us. It also was an opportunity to showcase what you and, and all of our staff and this commission has done in the last six years. There were, there were commissioners there and a lot of staff, which was very encouraging to see. There were also two gentlemen standing in the back of the room, so I'm, I'm not sure they weren't plants, but both of them echoed the same sentiment. And that was that they had been attending Cleveland City Club luncheons for decades, and they had never experienced as warm of a reception as they did for you and for that presentation. So you certainly made us proud that day and have made us proud for the last five years. Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any items of old business to discuss?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Waddington?
At some point, I'd like to look or take another snapshot at the Mills Creek, that lease, if there's any way, any wiggle room. I checked again today. We spent nearly five thousand on property taxes for this past year. I was told that they can do that since we're making a profit, which we're not making a profit out there, but that forty thousand put us... Recently, there was a Register article that said we were seventy-four thousand in the hole, which in fact, that lease is what's actually killing us besides the rainy season. But I would like to look at that, maybe even sit down with some folks, reconfigure the golf course where we don't have to use the Catholic cemetery property. Hole three's in a floodplain, and then hole four, I know they go out to the tree line. I've looked at it. I think you've had a map of it, too. Maybe we could come up with some different ideas as far as changing it, because we're nearing, what, about a million dollars now with that lease? Twenty-five years ago. I think we looked at the numbers today, and that's a lot. This year is, what, thirty-seven thousand, correct?
Total.
Yeah, total. That we paid with the lease when I went up. It's, you know, you add that up over twenty-five years. Great, for probably, what, eight, nine, ten acres of property, and you're going to get a million dollars. Couldn't sell it for...
I agree.
I would like to have somebody, maybe staff, and I'd like to be included.
Sure.
I think since I'm going to be on another...
Commissioner Murray, it sounded like you had something to offer.
I did, thank you. I, I agree with Mr. Waddington. I mean, that lease is an abomination. Maybe it was fair at the time. It isn't anymore. It runs through twenty twenty-four, so we only have another couple of years. It's time to fish or cut bait. I mean, the, the, the golf course, having a municipal golf course is, is increasingly rare. It's an asset that we should hold on to. And, you know, I don't look at that as a seventy-five thousand dollar cost. There are many parks that we have in the city that cost a whole lot more. We don't expect parks to, to pay for themselves, and, and we shouldn't expect Mills Creek to do so either. But I think we do need to call the question with our friends in Toledo and say, do you want to negotiate with us? Or we can move in a different direction and redesign the golf course so that we don't need that land. Absolutely. And I, you know, this is the hundred and fifty, it's, what is it, hundred, what is the, what is the, the anniversary we're celebrating this year with Mills Creek? Is it a hundred and fifty?
Eightieth, eightieth. Eightieth this year is coming up, yeah.
Well, I added a couple of years there, didn't I?
Cedar points.
There's another park that didn't lose, there's another park that didn't lose seventy-four thousand dollars last year. The celebration's there.
But I, I think this would be a good year to, to resolve the question.
I, I, to him, I, I don't want to continue kicking this can down the street, and Commissioner Waddington has brought, has been in my ear about this for the last six years, and then he was in my ear about it in twenty eleven, so I guess that counts as seven years. I think it's time, if Commissioner Waddington is willing, and perhaps Commissioner Murray is willing, is it possible that I could ask you two to form a committee of two and, and, and begin the process of, of reaching out, perhaps, to the Catholic Church, the dioceses, maybe starting on a local level, and let's see where this takes us?
You want to do good cop or bad cop?
Are you going to go to the dioceses in Toledo?
I've, I've suggested a golfer and an attorney. So that, that is quite a mix. I think it could be a successful mix. If you're willing to do that, I would ask for a motion to, to appoint Commissioner Waddington, Commissioner Murray, to be a, a committee of two to investigate.
Mr. Hager?
Through the Commission President, this might be something that's just easier done instead of as a...
Without a motion?
Committee, instead of just doing it as Commissioner Waddington and Commissioner Murray, as opposed to a, a committee. If you want to do a committee, I'm perfectly fine with that, but then we're going to have to follow open meetings and all that fun.
The purpose of that, and I'm certainly going to follow your lead today, anyway. The purpose of doing that is to, is to give it more relevance. We've, we've talked about doing this now for seven or eight years. I think I can count on my two friends, Commissioner Waddington, Commissioner Murray, to take it seriously, so I'm perfectly willing to leave it informal. That's what you're suggesting, suggesting, leave it informal, and let's approach it that way, and let's see where it goes. And perhaps you can report back to us in a, in a defined period of time.
Mr. Chairman, I shared back in two thousand seven, you got that paperwork today. When we brought it up, you know, that's how far back this goes. It's just, it strangles you, you know, a small mini course. It's, you know, nine-hole course. A lot of courses are closing. I don't want to see that happen, and I'm sure, I'm hoping that someday that we can get back on our feet. But that forty thousand, just under forty thousand, every year, the beginning of the year, that just knocks you, you know, knocks you down. And if you get a rainy month or two, it's just hard to collect the revenue.
We, we have a plan going forward then, and I, I'm hopeful that neither of your swings will improve.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Poole?
What, how much, how much of a portion of that's in the floodplain? Percentage of the property? Any idea?
I, I don't have any idea.
Huge.
Would give us that answer.
Thank you.
Jason's probably in the best position, I'll say. Do you know where he is?
We'll get that answer for you from Jason.
You don't know?
And through, through the Commission President to the commission, we welcome the leadership on this. We know it's been a tough issue. We've taken a few cracks at this and gotten close, but to Dennis's point, it's always kind of died as it got to the dioceses in Toledo. We will absolutely reach out to, to Commissioner Murray and Commissioner Waddington and find the appropriate staff people to kind of help staff your efforts. But I do think it's written, it's gotten to that point, both in combination with the struggles of the course itself and with our inability at just a staff-to-staff level to, to gain movement on this, to, to elevate it. And I think your involvement in this will very much help with that. So we'll get in touch later this week and figure out how you guys want to approach it, and then go from there.
I think, Mr. Whipser, what you're suggesting is staff will provide them with documents, the, the lease, and perhaps... the lease, and perhaps the position of the land and how much of it is unusable, allow them to make their case. And I would suggest we start on a local level with Father Monte Hoyle, who is the pastor of all three Catholic parishes, and Jeff Clare, their business manager, and that might be a good strategy, a good starting strategy.
That sounds great.
Thank you. Any additional items of new business?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wadding.
I brought this up a long time ago, and now that I drive, buy it a lot when I'm heading downtown, this year on Park on Elm Street, possibly making that a one-way with the splash pad and all the new equipment we have over there. That's a lot of kids running in the street on Elm Street there, possibly making that one-way to help. You know, we have the park over there, now we got all that new equipment there and the splash pad. I'm just thinking, a lot of parents might have two or three kids and not paying attention, you know, runs in the road, somebody gets hit. I just want to prevent an accident, maybe calm it down by having it one-way, one direction or other.
Are you suggesting we perhaps ask engineering?
Yeah, I'd like to, if we can look at that now, because it's going to be, with that new park there, there's going to be a lot of kids there.
Great suggestion. Mr. Klein, will you take a look at that and communicate back to Mr. Waddington?
Thank you.
Additional items of new business?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
So I had, five days ago or so, I circulated to the commissioners by email a redlined set of commission rules. Every two years, we adopt a new set of commission rules. Sometimes we adopt the exact same thing that we've used for years. I just tried to update it to reflect our current practices and would move that that be approved as our commission rules.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
These are individual amendments. Can we go through the thought process behind what we're trying to accomplish on some of these? I mean, some of them are very clear, and it's six and a half dozen other whether we address them at all. But the president may deem, 405, the president may, if it deemed advisable, arrange the seating of the members of the commission, of the commission chamber, and all members shall occupy said seats so designated during the time of their term of office. May I suggest that we should be able to identify where we sit down? This isn't first grade. If somebody wants, I don't see a ruling coming from the chairperson telling me where to sit. Number one, I don't see a need for it, and number two, this body really doesn't have the authority to bestow upon you Ayatollah-like powers. That's, it just seems silly that you're going to tell us where to sit.
Commissioner Murray, do you have some explanation of that specific section?
Well, as to that particular proposed amendment, I was simply seeking to codify what we've long done, so that, you know, when there would be a question about that in the future, and maybe there will come a point in time where there isn't someone around who remembers how, as we started doing these things, that it was set forth in the rules. That's all it was on that particular one. I mean, I like, I always liked the rotating chairs. We got to meet each other. I think Mr. Brady isn't as fond of those. He calls them musical chairs instead of rotating chairs, so...
You're stealing my comments, Mr. Murray. Did you echo my sentiments? I never found the rotating chairs to be effective. I served as the commissioner back in 2010, and we had assigned seats, and that seemed to be what we had done for the last 30 or 40 or 50 years. I was comfortable with that. I was uncomfortable with the music of chair seats, and I'm still uncomfortable with that concept.
Well, I'm stuck next to you for the next two years. This is a version of Dante's Inferno.
My sympathy.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Twine.
As 4.05 is written, it says the president may, if it is deemed advisable, so I think it does leave it up to the president to make the decision whether there are assigned seats or not assigned seats.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole, I'm going to recognize you if everyone else and after everyone else has spoken on this issue for at least one time. Any other commissioners wish to speak on this issue? Commissioner Poole?
Mr. Murray's point is what is my point. We've got the same point. You're asking, you're making a rule, a hard rule, that each commission should actually determine for themselves. I don't care where I sit, really, but we're trying to make rules that make some sense and actually accomplish something. Just accumulating power at the head table doesn't, is really not good for us to do long-term. It's simple as that. Our commission and six or seven elected officials that are unable to agree about where they're going to sit is just kind of sad that we need to have it dictated to us. Mr. Murray had his own idea. We agreed to it. That's fine. I just object to the kind, I think this is a bad idea. That's just one. We could move, enough said about, that's what I think about this, about these changes. Some are just unnecessary. The roll call vote, is that a law, what we're, that we're trying to comply with, 406? Is that a law that we're trying to...
To the best, to the best of my knowledge, that is not a law, but it is, it is a substitute for what we're doing by having the positions, the seats rotate. A lot of bodies do have a rule that says that periodically, like every meeting, sometimes even with each vote, whoever votes first rotates. It's a way so that that last vote, if you will, that sometimes is decisive, is carried around evenly among the members of the body.
That's fine. I'm not, I don't object to doing, I just wonder why you did it and why we're codifying it again. You're making rules for every commission that comes along, and we could just as easily have instructed the clerk to do it that way and let her come up with a fashion to accomplish what you want, but that's, that's fine. That answers my question. In case somebody, I'll continue going through this and give everybody an opportunity to 5.06, it's already covered in the charter. What the duties of the city manager is. Additionally, as you read, and I'll read it, "City commission members recognize that the city manager shall direct and coordinate the day-to-day activities of the employees of the city, including the management of time for such employees. No city commission member shall reprimand, give orders to, or otherwise direct the activities of any city employee. A complaint made directly to a member of the city commission by a citizen shall be forwarded to the manager for investigation by an appropriate letter or memorandum from that city member." All except the last sentence is really the way things operate. And if you've got a complaint that somebody's been directed to do some work, really, we should handle that as a body. Codifying this makes little sense, number one. What's the penalty if somebody violates it? You can't enforce it. So that's one thought about all of these edicts that we're pushing through here. With regard to complaints from a citizen, it's been my practice, if I get an email from a citizen, I just forward it to the city manager. I have no intention of sitting down writing memorandums and letters and things to the city manager when it doesn't change anything, when I could simply forward what was sent to me with just one click. At 100 a week, you got, I'm not sure, what's the purpose of complicating this job any more than it is? So that's a question in terms of approving this.
Mr. Murray.
I'm sorry, I'm not clear on what the particular question is.
The particular question is two things. One, I'll just do the last line. "A complaint made requires I now do a formal memorandum or appropriate letter." I contend that it is just as simple, if I get an email with a concern, that I do just what I've been doing, click it, and forward it to the city manager. Simple as that. And the next question is, if I choose to do that and not sit down and write a memorandum of some sort for the, that suits the chairperson, I presume, I'm not even sure who decides what is going to be considered an appropriate memorandum. You haven't even dictated that. At any rate, what are you going to do about it? We have no authority to enforce it, is the problem with writing all these directions to what people can do. There's no authority to do that. And specifically in the charter, it tells us what our authority is, and it does not allow you to tell people where they have to sit. It's not included.
Mr. Chairman, may I address?
Mr. Mr. Murray.
So the reason for this, and I would regard, by the way, simply clicking and forwarding the complaint to be an appropriate letter, an email is a letter, in my opinion, so I don't think there's anything wrong with that, is, and I've been on this, I've been on and off this commission for a good while, and I can think back to times where we had problems with directives coming from commissioners to subordinates of the city manager. The city manager wasn't in the loop. The employee felt uncomfortable, and I think this is just a way to codify this. Does this create any kind of mechanism where somebody gets some kind of consequence as a result of not following this? No, I don't think so. I suppose it could rise to an extreme level, but in general, this is normative, if you will. We're trying to say to each other and to those who follow, this is how business should be conducted, and so that's what I was seeking to capture with this particular proposed modification.
Mr. President, can I address this as well?
Commissioner Martin.
I like the idea of this being entered, just to reinforce the charter. It is in the charter, the whole chain of command and who reports to, but however, being a department head at one time when things weren't going as well as they're going right now, I was asked to do unethical things, I was ordered to do unprofessional things. I refused. I called 911 on city commissioners to get them out of my office. So I don't think there's anything wrong with adding this and reinforcing it right now. I'll take this opportunity, too, at the same time, say, Mr. Murray, thank you for being a mayor and adding ethics and professionalism back to the seat. I mean, I'm not saying it's always been like that, but I've had the displeasure of working without professional mayors, and you've added a lot of professionalism to this. And I got to say, and when I needed to decide who to vote for on this, one, I mean, I think Dick, Mr., I forget your name, no, Mr. Brady, I call you Dick too much. Mr. Brady, I knew for legacy sake or to preside over ceremony, I thought he did a good job as vice mayor, and he deserves a chance. So yes, I thought I would vote for him, but I also thought that you did not desire to do it any longer, so. But I talked to department heads, division heads, and they all told me the same thing. You didn't interfere in the day-to-day operations. You had professionalism about you that made them all work and respect you, so I hope that Mr. Brady was taking notes, so. Let's see about that.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Twine.
As mentioned earlier, I support the changes to the commission rules, and just as Mr. Meinzler mentioned about how he's had some challenges with elected officials or higher-ups reaching down into the chain of command. I've worked for 30 years in public service and also experienced those things. It can put the employee in a very difficult position at times, and it could put also the city manager, the person in charge, if they are not part of that complaint or that concern, puts them in a position where they don't know what's going on, and then their subordinate is trying to figure out how to fix it or how to address the commissioner's issues. So again, I fully support these changes. I think it is a good addition to the commission rules, so everyone's clear. And it's not saying that a commissioner can't discuss maybe something that's going on with an employee. Again, address that with the city manager, or address it with another commission, the commission vice president or president to address those issues. So there are ways and opportunities to get things addressed, but it, what we would do, I think, as elected officials, is not put our city staff in difficult positions where they're trying to make a decision as to whether they need to do something or not.
Thank you, Commissioner Twine. Additional discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just lastly, with regard to that, what we just talked about, just recognize that it does not address inappropriate commissioners. It's already in the charter. We all, we, and you brought this up as a result of things that happened in the past. I believe Commissioner Meinzler's been retired for quite, for several years, so this is not something that, we're not fixing something by any stretch, and that's the reason, that's the reason I brought it up. The fact of the matter is, it doesn't fix inappropriate commissioners. They're still going to be inappropriate. Lastly, on the 15 on audience participation, open discussion on matters of city business, members or other officials, administrative representatives shall not debate public speakers and shall only answer questions as directed by the president of the commission. Of course, we shouldn't debate public speakers, and that's fine. When people present something to commission, I mean, this is where we meet, and the only opportunity, this is the opportunity they have to do that. If you need, if you need clarification or you want, it's no different than when staff presents something. It's city business. It should be conducted exactly the same way. No, of course, debating with them is not going to be in order, and you have the ability to deal with that, but the city man, the president of the commission, I suggest to you, doesn't get to dictate to elected officials what city business they may or may not discuss or respond to. And so this is going to be tested immediately, because I don't, you just, I don't need your permission to speak about public issues. None of us do. That's my thoughts on that issue, and that one's, that's something you should just reconsider before you try and vote this in.
Is there a question in there, Mr. Poole?
Not a question, just a statement, gentlemen. You don't have, there's two things in this that we're voting in that we have no, that as a group, you do not have the authority to impose on individuals where to sit, one, which is insignificant, because nobody cares where they sit, but you don't, and nor do you get to tell people that they can't, that individual commissioners, that they can't participate in what's going on in city business unless it's out of order by what's in Robert's Rules of Order. But just...
Additional discussion, commissioners? Mr. Cresser, you polled the commission on the motion.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
No.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That motion is passed, and those rules are adopted.
Mr. Chairman, point of order.
Commissioner Poole.
If you read the, I believe it's the charter, the changes in our rules require that they be read and discussed at a meeting prior to a meeting that they're voted on.
I will rely on our law director, it's our parliamentarian, for direction on that issue.
It's going to take me a moment. Is there a particular section you're citing?
You can just blow me off if you want, and we'll cover it next month, next week. It's fine.
I mean, what, if it's an issue, we'll bring it back next commission meeting.
Mr. Chairman, also, the, I think we have a section in there that you discuss dealing with executive sessions. I just simply need to get it on the record. State law says discussion and executive session are not automatically confidential. The law covers what portions are. The change that you've made in this ordinance or change in these rules, you can't restrict elected officials any more than state law does. It's not binding, it's simply not binding.
Allow our parliamentarian to speak to both those issues.
Well, the rules can always go more restrictive than the state government, so we can go more restrictive.
Mr. Chairman, may I suggest that, or may I suggest that they can be more restrictive in the charter, but not in your rules sitting at this table? Because if you read in the, that's something else you can look up.
We have a motion that I believe is passed, and I declared that it's passed, and I'll rely on Mr. Heyber to provide us with some insight on that at our next meeting. Additional items of new business? I have a few housekeeping items to share with you. We need to reappoint two members of the Landmark Commission. We need to reappoint two members of the Landmark Commission, Alan Griffin and Ryan Nagel. I'll ask for a motion to reappoint these two gentlemen.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion? Mr. Cresser, we poll the commission on that motion.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That motion's passed. Every so often, we need to appoint a person to be responsible for public records training. In the past, that has always been our commission clerk, Kelly Cresser. So, I would like a motion to once again appoint Mrs. Cresser as that person.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second discussion? Mr. Cresser, we poll the commission on that motion.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That motion is passed. And in the next few days, I'll be reaching out to commissioners to formally set the layers on appointments. I do have two appointments of commissioners, two commissions this evening. Those selections have to be approved by this commission. They are to the planning and the community relations commission. I would like to appoint Commissioner Meinzler to planning and Commissioner Harris to community relations. I would ask for a motion to approve both of these appointments.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion? Mr. Cresser, we poll the commission.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That motion passes and those commissioners are appointed. With the appointment of Chief That motion passes and those commissioners are appointed. With the appointment of Chief Orzek as assistant city manager, we'll be formally beginning the search for a new police chief. Our charter is very specific as to the makeup of that search committee. Either myself or my designee will serve as the chairperson. And the committee is made up of the chairman of the Civil Service Commission, I believe that would be Vincent Rhodes at this point in time, and three city residents chosen by myself with your approval. That committee navigates through the qualifications and interview process and then submits the names of as many as three finalists to the city manager for the final selection. I intend to provide the names of these three residents to the commission at our next meeting. So that will happen at our very next meeting, two weeks from now. I think what I need to have was a motion to make those appointments this evening. Is that correct, Mrs. Kresser? Or will we wait to announce the names to make those appointments?
Well, Mr. President, if you want to wait till the next meeting to announce them...
I would like to wait till the next meeting to announce those three individuals. This is also the year that our charter review is supposed to take place. Clerk has been asked to formally advertise for volunteers to serve on that committee. And that's going to take, by our charter, that's to run for 30 days. So our charter provides for each commissioner to select two electors each for this review. They do not have to come from the people that apply, or they can come from the people that apply. That does not matter. But I'd ask that each of you commissioners start thinking about the folks you'd like to select for these positions. And after the results of that public outreach, you will form that committee on a, I think the soonest that can happen with our 30-day requirement is probably February 24th, the second meeting in February. Great. Well, we're down to audience participation. Anyone in the audience that wishes to share with us your thoughts on city business, step to the podium and give us your name and address and share with us your thoughts.
Thank you, President Brady. Tim Schwanger, 362 Sheffield Way. Well, hoping I'm not breaking the rules tonight, but I gotta, I have to ask a couple of questions. There's a couple of questions that were not answered as part of item number six, which is the change order for Shoreline Drive. And those questions would be, how many of the utility poles will actually be removed as part of that project? And will there be, will there be areas where all utility wires will be removed? In other words, we know that there's going to be some low-tension wires that are going to be left over, but are there going to be areas where all the wires are going to be taken down? Those were not answered. The other issue is, we are beginning to proceed with the reconstruction of McCartney Road. And I've brought this up before at this commission meetings. I'll bring it up again for the new commissioners. At last, the last answer I received on the improvement of State Route 6 at the corner of Fremont Ave, heading west towards Bayview, there's probably a tenth of a mile there that is in atrocious condition. As part of the McCartney Road rebuild, we're also doing some of the side streets, repaving those. And I would like to have one of the commissioners, the commission president, or whoever's in charge of the exonship for the engineers department, excuse me, department, take a look at it to see if we can't do that curve from Fremont Ave out until where it, the city limits turns into Bayview, whether we have to do it in-house or, you know, add it to the project or whatever. But it doesn't make any sense to do all that work out there and then have that stretch look like World War II zone. It's crumbling. So, thank you very much.
Good suggestion. We'll see what we can do. Anyone else for audience participation? Mr. Lamarcus?
Thank you, Mr. President. Tom Lamarcus, 20648 Street. Just a few things. First, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Webster on his presentation of the Cleveland City Club. A few other cities were there wondering what the heck is going on in Sandusky. And I noticed that there's, all the cities along the lake shore are attempting to maybe copy us, or we're copying a few others. So that's a good thing. I'm kind of pleased with this National Resource Network tie-in because that is going to give us some guidance as a city as far as salaries go. And with that in mind, we have just given the city manager a $10,000 pay increase that is only $3,650 less than the governor of the state of Ohio. So our salaries across the board are really getting top-heavy, so I think we need to take a look at that. And I also think that our law director's salary should really just be a notch below the city managers'. The law director's a pretty important person when it comes to city management, and the gentleman's trying to look at some of the laws on which we operate here. So that should be given some more thought. We're now also adding a new position as the assistant city manager with a salary that's unknown, and we still don't have a job description of what that position is going to be. So I'm just kind of curious about that. And I'm still also wondering why we're building a new building out on, off of Hayes Avenue when we've got Meg Street over there that just could perhaps be added on to if we need more space and update the building. I mean, we just spent millions of dollars here on a 100-year-old building, and that building on Meg Street is, what, 40, 50 years old? So our city has a population of roughly 24,583 people, and they're all looking at what's going on here, but they're afraid to come in and speak. I mean, that's what I'm hearing when people talk to me. So, you know, again, take a look at the salaries. Recession's do run in cycles. I hate to see our city get caught in a cash reserves crunch, and they think that we're spending all of our dollars today and there's not going to be anything left. So maybe we could take a look at the thought that not every position in the city requires an annual raise. Perhaps a cost of living adjustment, like the social security recipients like myself receive, you know, 16 and a half percent of our population is 65 and over. And I'd be happy to share with all of you my $24 pay increase that I got this year. Keep in mind that the local median income is allegedly $36,117. Again, salaries. And then Camp Street, we've got the railroad ties and the rails popping up on Camp Street. And so I'm wondering if that's in the five-year plan to take a look at that as a main thoroughfare coming in back into town. I don't live over there, but I certainly drive it on occasion, and it's getting rough. And if we had a ward system, then someone from that side would be coming to you folks and saying, hey, what about us? You just spent $10 million on Shoreline Drive. I'll buy a million or two for Camp Street. Thank you very much. Have a great week.
Thank you, Mr. Lamarcus. Anyone else?
Hello again. Arlene Thompson, 1902, April Circle. We've talked about golf courses. We've talked about, did you set my timer? Okay, good. I noticed you didn't set it for the others, but that's okay. My water bill. On January 3rd, I got this notice before my second water bill was even due. And it's a shut-off notice. Will you cut me a break? You blew my turning over relief. I'm sorry. We can't come up with a software, we're paying Microsoft all that money. You can pay a little bit more and get a better software package for the water department. I called down there, and when we go to Arizona for three months, they, you know, whatever I paid the month while I was here, that's my estimated for next month. Wrong. You divide it, you add them up and divide them by 12. I didn't teach math, but that's one way to do it, okay? The disrespect that I saw tonight, and I hope the city of Sandusky watches this video, I saw disrespect from the other commissioners toward Commissioner Poole. He has valid, valid ideas that would improve the seating here. You'd need more seating if you would answer some questions. I spoke with Mr. Valley, you all know he's my neighbor, when I got home and said, they aren't answering questions. They just changed the rule. They're not answering questions. He said, this is total bull, you know what? He said, we used to answer their questions if we knew the answers, or we said to that public person, we'll bring it back to you next meeting. And they did. You all aren't doing it the way it used to be done. I've been around here longer than most of you. I'm older than most of you. I've paid water bills for 56 years, on time, every time. And I get a shut-off notice, and you won't answer my questions, and you're spending that money in the water and sewer department, which we're paying more now, spending it for other projects. Get a software program to be up to date, you know? These are sent, I was told, I called your office. Did you get my message?
Yeah, I have notes.
You have notes?
Yeah.
Good. It wasn't pretty, was it?
Oh, I can't speak for that.
Oh, it wasn't. I can tell you it wasn't because I was so angry. These are sent out automatically the day your payment is late. It's the water bill. It's $60.34. The city isn't going to go broke. They're going to pay more to get somebody to turn my water off than this bill is. So I think you all owe Mr. Poole an apology because you went ahead and you voted exactly the way many of you wanted and disregarded his concern for the people of Sandusky being able to get an answer to something. I wish you all luck. I congratulate you on your raise and your assistant, Mr. Webster. Question it. But congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
And I'm sorry, you're not interrupting me, and you're being very kind, but if you can't know the answer to Mr. Poole's question, you're our law director for the city. And I'm not trying to be condescending, but you should be right on that. Google it.
Well, the quick answer is that it's not in the charter.
Well, that's the quick answer, but is it the right answer?
Yes, it's the right answer.
Well, not for the people of Sandusky. No.
It's the correct answer.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole?
Just for the record, I've given the law director the site from. It's in Rule 2.04 of our, of the rules that you just changed. I spoke too quickly. It was, it was in front of me.
Any additional audience participation?
And it is there.
Welcome. Oh, Vicki Bird, 2114 Hubbard Street. Welcome, Mr. Harris, Mr. Meinzler. Back, Mr. Waddington. Mr. Harris will take care of the community. Mr. Meinzler, I'm glad you're there because I believe in supporting our safety services. Six years ago, on July 23rd, if I'm not mistaken, 2014, was a meeting here, only three of you were present at the time. You, Ms. Twine, you, Mr. Murray, and you, Mr. Brady. When you decided to put issue eight on the ballot, that was July 23rd, 1914. This is today. I'm pretty sure I'm right with the date. This is today, and I don't know about anybody else, but I like where we're at. I know you got hawks that are watching. I'm sure you're going to be honest about where you're spending money. My main concern back then, six years ago, was firehouse seven. Guy does things in sevens. That firehouse is important to me because I live on the West Side and grew up on the West Side. We don't have good safety services, fire, police. We don't have good infrastructure. I've said it all before, I'll say it again. We're going to crumble and die. We are a legacy city. I do have one question. You don't have to answer it. Maybe somebody will get back with me. We are a legacy city, correct? Are we a part of the Legacy Initiative, Legacy City Initiative, which was started in 2012? It's just another place to help find funds. I don't know if we are or not. We are? Yay. Good.
Yes.
I'm glad to hear that. All right. Just wanted to say thanks. Want to say keep up the good work. Keep moving forward. Keep rebuilding because we've got to rebuild. If you don't rebuild, we're not reborn. We don't rebuild. We don't refurbish, and we don't tear down what's needed to do. We'll die. And we're not dying. We're reborn. And I like what I see. And you'll be held to account, one way or another. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bird. Additional comments from the audience?
Everybody, Happy New Year. Welcome to the newbies and welcome back to the oldies but goodies. I just was writing things down when you guys were talking and some other things I came in with. I'm glad to see someone has purchased a Central Avenue house and they're going to restore it. I haven't seen anything yet. I haven't been down there in a couple of weeks, but I'm glad to see that. That was a gorgeous house inside and outside, and I'm glad it's going to be done. I'm sad to see the Cook Building has to be torn down, that the Hogriffes had had to put so much money into that before they realized that, not that they didn't realize it, but it would have been nice that they would have known that before they had to put so much money into purchasing it even. But it looks like what they're going to put in place is very interesting and it's going to fit right in. And of course, everybody's asking, what's going to happen to all that stone? What are they going to do with all the stone? It would be nice if they could use some of that stone for the exteriors or a courtyard or something, or if some, I don't know who's going to haul it away. I'm sure it's just going to end up in a dump somewhere. It would be nice if somebody, of course, this is just asking, can you dump it over at Meg Street and give people two weeks to come and get what they want so they can line their sidewalks or put in a patio? Because that's, outside stone is not great big pieces. That could be carried off in a pickup truck or something. What happens to property in the city when a house does get torn down? Does it get resold? Do the neighbors get a chance to purchase it or split it to the, each neighbor on each side or something like that? Of course, we've been all talking back here and around the city. Is this going to be broadcast tonight? It seems to be a problem. We lost several meetings last year. And we've called, I called Kelly, and I've called Cable, and Cable, we have to call you, and they don't seem to be responsible. Let's see. The Jackson Street bumpouts, they were talking about how everybody's liked those. I don't understand the bumpouts when the sidewalk is so, the crosswalk is so far back and you have to pull so far forward over the crosswalk to see if traffic's coming. I do, I am real happy with the stop signs. I love the fact that the stop signs were put down there because it is a bit of a blind spot there. Everybody keeps talking about calming traffic on Shoreline. I spent a lot of time at Jackson Street Pier, at Shoreline Park. I didn't know Shoreline Drive was a speedway. I didn't see it that much. I don't know how many tickets were written down there in the past several years, but I didn't know Shoreline Drive was that much of a speedway. And if it was, why wasn't there cops down there all the time taking care of it? And it, it was in the paper that, I didn't bring it with me, that the city is not responsible for cleaning the snow off of business sidewalks. That makes sense. And I just want to put this out here again, just in case it tries to creep back into the city commission. If they're not responsible for cleaning the snow off the sidewalks, they shouldn't be responsible for picking up trash and cleaning up the cigarette butts and cleaning up across the sidewalks and the curbs and the back alleys around your business in the city. I don't think we, the city should ever have to bring it up again that we're going to hire a company to take care of your business storefront. You should be proud enough to take care of that yourself. Other than that, I hope we have a good year this year, and I hope we don't get into recession because we need to make more money so we can do more things.
Thank you, Ms. Carter.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anyone else moving to the podium, so I believe that a motion to adjourn in order.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, this meeting is adjourned.